Good evening to all of you, to our November 29 work session. Where'd November go? It's already the 29th. At any rate, we have a good agenda tonight, so I'm gonna move right into it. Then I'll begin by asking Ms. Knotts, our assisted town clerk, to call a row.
Mayor Marshburn.
I'm present.
Mayor Proton Vance.
Here.
Councilmember Behringer.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember Dellinger.
Here.
Councilmember Singleton.
Here.
Our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. You have that before you. What is your pleasure?
Some who?
Second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor of adoption of the agenda, would you vote aye?
Aye.
Does any opposition no? And there is none. Thank you very much. Okay. I'm not aware of any presentations tonight, so we'll move right into our reports and discussions. And starting with the first item there, our town attorney, Ms. Jones, will lead out on that issue right-of-way and easement acquisition. Ms. Jones?
I have not prepared a formal PowerPoint presentation, but the information is in your agenda packet. It contains the summaries of five recent right-of-way and easement acquisition projects. Acquisition generally begins at the 65% design phase, at which time the surveyor will prepare exhibits and meets-and-bounds descriptions of any needed right-of-way or both permanent and temporary easements. Then initial offer letters are sent out based on the tax value for the land that's needed. And at that time, I would submit to you a resolution authorizing a negotiated price or eminent domain action with a not-to-exceed amount. That not-to-exceed amount is for the compensation, which will be either the purchase price or the deposits, including the recording fees, excise taxes, and other costs such as a filing fee. It's important to note that the not-to-exceed amount does not include the legal fees needed for outside counsel, should that be a requirement. So acquisition, as you can see in the summaries, is technically complete when all of the necessary right-of-way and easements have been acquired. And that means either by deed or by the filing of an eminent domain case. For most of the projects that the town is involved with, such as roads, sidewalks, storm drains, or water and sewer projects, that's under what's called quick take, which means as soon as an eminent domain case is filed with the court and a deposit amount of just compensation is provided to the Superior Court Clerk, then the property vests in the town. For other eminent domain actions, for instance, if the town would want to acquire land for a park, or an office building, or another public project, those are not quick take. They take a little bit longer in the process of the court litigation for the property to be vested with the town. Under state law, just compensation is defined as the fair market value of the land. However, with a lot of the roadway and temporary easements and permanent drainage and utility easements, the amounts of land needed are quite small. And so the compensation amount is also small. An appraisal to determine fair market value generally can cost between $3,000 and $4,000 per property. So for these small amounts, generally, we're able to negotiate a price that does not include having an appraisal done. However, projects such as the White Oak Roundabout, there was one parcel because the estimated acquisition price amount would exceed $20,000. That did require under NCDOT to have an appraisal done. So an appraisal was done on that project. Because of the length of time, the appraisal had to be revised before we filed the eminent domain case because we haven't been able to come to an agreement with that particular property owner at this time. So some of the cases, such as White Oak, has a number of condemnation cases that have been filed but have not gotten to a mediation or a trial stage. New Rand Road has one case still pending in court. It's a property that involves 38 heirs. So as you can imagine, getting someone to represent all of those interests and getting everyone served has been difficult. So the Junction project, I was able to handle those four acquisitions without the need for outside counsel and without the need for any appraisals to be done on that property. Lake Drive was completed. There had to be two, what we call friendly condemnation cases filed, basically because a lender was involved in getting the sign-off from the lender. Took more time than was needed. Also did one friendly condemnation case in the Junction Boulevard situation. And Vandora Springs, which was handled all by outside counsel, that was one that did not involve any appraisals and did not involve the need for any litigation to be filed on those. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the process or about the amounts that are listed in those summaries that were provided in your agenda packet.
I have a question that I probably shouldn't know the answer to, but I don't think I do, so I'm gonna ask it. So if the property owner doesn't agree with or doesn't accept the offer of the town and desires to have an appraisal as a basis for making some decision, who is responsible for paying for that?
Well, in some cases, the... If we need to go... If we got a litigation, generally, the town will be paying for the appraisal because we'll have to prove what just compensation is. In those cases, if it's a contested condemnation case, then it's likely that the property owner will also get their own appraisal. So you'll sometimes have the dueling appraisals if they don't agree with the amount that's appraised. So it could be both parties paying for it. But again, because when you're dealing with small amounts of compensation, the fees become more than the compensation in some cases. So that's not likely to happen. In negotiating with some property owners, you know, I first start with the tax value, which, you know, in this climate, may not be accurate even for just the land price. So if property owners provide a recent appraisal or show me comparables, then we tend to increase the compensation offer at that point based on that information that's provided.
Okay, thank you. And if the property owner had to pay for the appraisal, if they requested one or not? So, yeah. Okay, any other questions for Ms. Jones? I would just... Yeah?
You mentioned before that they're very time-consuming. And so kind of what percentage of your time and, I guess, town legal resources being dedicated to this? And then sort of what do you project out based on what's coming? An increase, decrease, stay the same?
Yeah, so initially, once the engineer or surveyor has identified what properties will be impacted, there has to be title searching done. And that can be easier, that can be complicated. For instance, you know, if there's wills or estates involved, that becomes much more complicated to do. So it's hard to give an amount. You know, some properties, especially if we go to properties that go back very far in time, been held by the same family, for instance, that becomes difficult. So that's one phase of work. Then when you get into the negotiation process, you know, you have to locate, especially if they don't live here. If it's not someone's house, but it's a vacant piece of property, it takes some amount of time to locate the right people. And then I have had challenges with communicating with them. And even when we've agreed to, you know, a negotiated price, having them actually come in and sign a deed sometimes is difficult. So it does take considerable amount of time. And with the amount of projects that are probably coming in the pipeline, it's going to consume even more time. But even when, for instance, some of the projects that have been referred to outside counsel, there's still a lot of oversight and communications that have to go on. And with the town engineer, we've pretty much, as long as we're within that not-to-exceed amount, have been, you know, approving, you know, different offers based on what, you know, they're asking for. If they're reasonable, trying to look at a fair... For each project, a fair way of assessing or providing, you know, calculating the compensation for everyone. So that's not a very good... You know, it's kind of, it's a depends answer. But it's also, you know, the White Oak Roundabout became very time-sensitive. And so we were paying... We had to pay basically to have the firm kind of gear up for that very quickly. So that's probably why the legal fees are much higher for that. We also didn't have the title work done. I wasn't able to do all the title work in-house for that project. I was enough to kind of communicate with the owners, locate all of the owners, but not all of the lien holders. And White Oak is another project where there's a lot of utility easements already there that have to be relocated, so there's getting the permission of all the various utilities. But with the engineering department, we are building what we call like forms with all the magic language that the City of Raleigh wants for water and sewer, that Duke wants for the power easements, that the different telecommunications companies want for their easements. So hopefully, as we continue to do this, it will get, you know, not easier or not, but more efficient in the future.
To be fair to say, we have a pretty good relationship with, I don't know if it's a law firm or... The name Raz comes to my mind, but that have assisted you and the town when we need some additional help.
Yes, so I guess last summer, I think it was, I did an RFP or RFQ for legal firms that could assist with the acquisition process, and three were selected. So Raz... Raspberry is with Colley Prudgen. And he had been doing work for the town before I came on as the town attorney. And then Pointer Spruill, that law firm has been handling the White Oak and the Lake Drive, the acquisitions that I wasn't unable to finalize for Lake Drive, they've handled that. And then another firm, Teague Campbell, which we used in the Stormwater... That Stormwater Pond case, they also were, you know, met the qualifications necessary. They were a little more expensive because they use a right-of-way acquisition firm, which again, there was a flat fee of $3,500 per parcel just for that aspect of, you know, going out and negotiating with it. And for easements that were about $100, projected to be $100, $200, that's just, you know, an excessive cost at that point.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anything else for Attorney Jones?
Just one point in reference to the acquisition of the property, particularly on the White Oak Roundabout piece. Do you still have parcels that are in condemnation that are going through eminent domain?
Yes.
Okay. And that's... And before any type of construction can be considered, do the condemnation have to be completed along with the utilities and everything relocated? And then the construction can be...
So because of the quick take and with the cases filed, we... All of the property interests have vested in the town, so construction could go forward. But yes, the next stage would be utility relocations to occur. We have a... I believe Duke wanted a couple of the easements, what we had done as permanent drainage and utility easements. They want those modified, so we're working on those right now. And then... So we're not legal... Legally, we have the right to proceed with construction. However, these cases will take some time to determine what the amount of... What the end amount of compensation will be.
And this may be slightly off-topic, but what is the scheduled date to start construction? If it's off-topic, then...
I have to defer...
Okay.
Good evening. So for the White Oak Roundabout, we are looking to start construction around late spring to early summer timeframe. There are some activities that are planned to do before school lets out for the summer. And then the bulk of the road disturbing activities are... The plan is to do those during the summertime because it will not impact the school schedule as much, so...
All right, thank you.
So far, I think we're on track, hopefully, so...
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Sure.
Okay.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Sure. Anybody else? Okay, well, thank you, Ms. Jones. And I appreciate the good work you do to move that along as expeditiously as you can and not have any more delays. Again, I know it can be a challenge when you've got a lot of heirs involved and tracking that stuff down is a chore. So I appreciate the good work. Thank you. All right, I'm gonna move to item number two on our agenda, social district ordinance. And I'll recognize Ms. Shayla Douglas, our downtown small business development manager. And I believe Ms. Jones will also participate in this presentation. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, everyone. So for the past couple of months, the Downtown Garner Association has been researching...
It's on here, it's just not up there.
Oh. What's going on? Sorry.
Go ahead.
So the Downtown Garner Association has been researching and exploring social districts as they rise through popularity throughout North Carolina. My slides come up? Is that working now? Okay. It would be me.
It's always turned on, I'm sorry.
Has it not worked all night?
I just have a blank screen, so I was hoping to...
All of it's there right now, there you go. That's the button.
Thank you. Very helpful. Okay, sorry.
Yeah, fine.
All for talent.
Leave the tip right here.
So last September, the North Carolina General Assembly passed House Bill 890, which allowed for the passage of social districts in municipalities. It allows people to take a drink from an ABC permitted business to walk around to non-ABC permitted businesses. And the North Carolina Retail Merchant Association was the main driver of House Bill 890 to be able to level the playing field for non-ABC permitted businesses because many people would come to downtowns to breweries or distilleries and stay at the breweries and distilleries, but not explore out to the other businesses that were within downtown. So the purpose of social districts is really an economic driver to drive patrons to other businesses that aren't ABC permittingies. So a social district is a defined area with clearly marked boundaries. Boundaries and hours of operations are up for each city or town to determine. So the alcohol must be purchased within the district and be consumed before leaving the district. So people cannot bring their own alcohol into the district. And they can also not take alcohol that they purchase within the district outside of the district. So there will be special branded cups that cannot be larger than 16 ounces that businesses must use to mark what business the beverage was purchased from and what time. And you can only take one beverage from an establishment. You cannot take multiple ones. And then individual businesses are able to opt in or out for the district on whether they are welcome for alcoholic beverages coming into their businesses. And if they are not, there will be appropriate signage on their entrance points to know whether they do or do not participate in a social district. So as for the benefits of a social district, as I mentioned, the merchant association's push was for it to be an economic driver for downtown businesses. It will help make downtown Garner a destination, especially with the rest of our revitalization projects that we have in town, especially with the LMG project coming, attracting more visitors and increasing pedestrian traffic to downtown. It will also incentivize businesses that we have in downtown to stay open longer because a lot of our businesses close early longer. So more people will come in the later hours and not just early in the day. It'll also help people stay longer in downtown because a lot of times people come to downtown for one thing, whether it's a haircut or they want a coffee, and then they leave. So this is a way to try to keep people in downtown and spending money at different businesses. It can also attract more food and beverage establishments as we get more commercial space in downtown to want to come to downtown. It's also beneficial to our four ABC permitted businesses that we have in downtown. So like the night market currently requires a special event permit to serve their wine and beer that they do. But they are welcome to no longer serving beer and wine from their vendors and pushing night market participants to buy locally from Full Bloom or Zen or Aristotle or Shady's. Lastly, it's also gaining property across North popularity, excuse me, across North Carolina. There's about 21 towns that have approved it. I believe Durham approved theirs this week. And then nearby towns such as Fuquay and Wake Forest are also in the process of approving theirs. And then along with the benefits, there are challenges. This will require an extensive education campaign for businesses. Luckily, we are close enough that the ALE division in Raleigh has offered to come help educate business owners on the proper procedures that they will need when serving to-go cups. But we'll also have to educate visitors to know that they can't bring their own alcohol into the district, that it must be thrown away, you can't take it into your car, things of that nature. It could incentivize retail to extend their hours, but there's also could be a staffing concern with extended hours of our businesses. Also, not every business will want to participate, which can create confusion or negative publicity for those that choose not to. In our pub... Ugh. In our downtown historic core, there aren't really a lot of gathering spaces besides the green space in front of the rec center, which would not be included in the district, that are gathering spots for people. And our sidewalks are narrow. I know we are... We have a streetscape project in place that's in the works. And we might be able to include, you know, various seating within that streetscape, but that's in the future. And then there are no public restrooms in downtown, so that could also be an issue. A concern from some of the businesses where that there might be overconsumption and monitoring overconsumption, which is also tied into educating business owners. And then it could deter retail establishments that are not alcohol-friendly from coming to downtown. Logistically, it'll increase the use of single-use containers and overall trash in downtown. So we would need to either install or use current trash receptacles that we have. We talked with Public Works, they are able to make a temporary solution if we were to enact this anytime soon for signage and trash. But we also need something more permanent if we continue on. And then staff does not work on the weekends to remove trash. And we would have to navigate trash pickup if there's a substantial increase in the trash that is accumulating in downtown. There's also gonna be an increased need for police monitoring and enforcement if we implement the district, making sure that, you know, there's no one being over-served, nobody's bringing in their own alcohol, and you know, that we are abiding in not serving alcohol to minors as well. And lastly, this can allow for alcoholic component at events that do not have alcohol normally. So such as downtown events that we do and then parks and recreation events. The new update to House Bill 890 allows for special events to pick and choose. So it's also an education component of if special events, which PRCR would opt out, making sure that that's the education piece of knowing that when it's... When you can drink and when you can't. And then so with this, there are 16 businesses that would be directly impacted and reside within the district boundaries that are proposed. So I made sure to send a survey to everyone of the 16 businesses. And then if they didn't fill it out, I went to them and had them fill it out. So we got feedback from all 16. So one of the questions was, do you think social districts are a good idea for downtown Garner? All four of the ABC permitted businesses agreed it was a good idea of the non-ABC permitted businesses. We had nine say it was a good idea, one say no, and two said maybe. And then when I asked, would you participate in a social district by allowing alcoholic beverages into your business? The four ABC permittingies said yes, but they don't really count for this question because you can't take... In the social district, you can't take alcoholic beverages that you bought in one... Like you couldn't take your drink from Aristotle into Zen. You would have to finish it and buy a new one. But six of the... Excuse me, that's supposed... No, that's nine. Supposed to be a nine. Nine of the ABC permitted... Non-ABC permitted businesses said they would participate by allowing beverages into their businesses. Five said no, and one said it does not pertain to their business. And then, so these are some examples of the currently approved districts. As you can see, Ashboro and Franklinton limit theirs to Thursday through Saturday. Franklinton has very limited hours of 5 to 10. Ashboro is 11 to 11. And then when you go to Wilson, Hickory, Greensboro, and Raleigh, all of theirs are open daily from different ranging times. Some are 12 to 9, 11 to 10, 10 to 10, and 11 to 11. The DGA is proposing these boundaries for the downtown social district. As you can see, the little signage points would mark entry and exit points. And we would also have trash receptacles at these signage points, which would also include the days and hours of the social district as long as law enforcement and ALE contact information. as long as law enforcement and ALE contact information to report any abuses that matter in the district. And so, we are proposing for the district, based off feedback from the businesses, as well as looking at other communities that have adopted their social district. We're proposing Monday through Saturday from 12 to 10 p.m. and Sunday from 12 to 5, to keep it uniform and simple for the education piece. And we don't want it too early, and we also don't want it going too late as well. And then, so for our signage, as I said, it has to be clearly marked. They have to have what days and hours it can be consumed, the telephone number for ALE, and it's also Garner PD must be located. And it also must say that the beverages must be bought in the district, consumed in the district, and cannot leave the district. So, as I said, we have to have the special cups. These are examples from Hickory and Youngsville. They cannot be glass and cannot be more than 16 ounces. They require to have the information printed directly on the container or a sticker. It can be black or white or color, depending on what the, each district decides to do. And then, it must be at least in 12.5 and say Drink Response Big B 21 on each and every sticker or cup. These are examples of window clings that would be utilized by the businesses if we did implement the district. As you can see, we have a beverages welcome. So, that would be for non-ABC businesses that welcome alcohol into their businesses. We have the sold here, which will be used by the ABC permitting businesses that opt in. And then, we also have an example of one that has no beverages and no alcohol will be allowed inside. All right, and that's all I have, and I'm ready for any questions that you have.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Douglas. I think I will go around to each council member to see who has questions, and I have a couple myself, I believe. So, Mr. Singleton, do you want to start? Do you have any questions?
Yes. So, any special event, like the night market, any alcohol has to be sold only from the businesses within here. There can be no separate vendors, and they have to drink within the social district.
I believe, this might be a better question for Terry. I believe if the special event decides to have their own alcohol, then it would void out the social district, or they can choose to continue to have the social district. It's up to the ABC, I mean, the special event permitting. Is that correct?
Right. The way, that's been a recent amendment. There was some confusion in state law that, that they couldn't coexist. But that's been amended to say you can have a special event that includes all of the social district plus other areas, and then people during the special event could go back and forth with an open container. Or you could have a special event that says, this is, for instance, a child-friendly event. There'll be no alcohol, and you could suspend the hours of the social district. So, for instance, if you wanted to have a special event and use the parks, the rec center lawn area, that could be, the special event could be, and whoever is the organizer of that special event in getting a special event permit could say, "We are going to allow alcohol in from the social district." They also could have other ABC or permitted vendors within the special event area or within the social district, but only as part of that special event permit.
Like it's allowed now. It's a special event permit that's allowed for a certain number of hours, a certain date and time, okay?
Well, right now, without a social district, you couldn't purchase a beverage in one of the licensed establishment and take it outside, technically, unless it's a social district.
Unless on their property, because the one on Rand Mill has the, on their property, you can go out there. That's different, okay? And just to follow up, so on a family-friendly event, say the parade and the tree lighting, you could suspend for that time, could suspend any alcohol sales in the social district until a designated time, they can start back up?
Yes. You would have to put up some kind of temporary signage to indicate that it's, you know, suspended during that time.
Okay, let somebody else ask questions from there. Thank you.
Would that, so the last question, would that have to come back to council if we're changing the social district's allowance? And there's a quest that during that event, it's not, it's not allowed? Or who makes that decision?
The way the ordinance is drafted, it's part of the special event permit application, so it would not necessarily have to come back to council. But that's how it's drafted. If you wanted oversight on each of the special event, you know, applications, that could be worked into the system at this point.
Anything else, Ms. Singleton?
Right, the second, no, sir.
I'll go to Ms. Behringer.
Yes, it's a question. You mentioned that there would be training given. Who would be, training be given to, and to what extent, how much would be involved?
So, ALE has offered to give the training to the ABC permitted businesses. And then, we'd also talked about doing a separate for anyone that allows it in. Just haven't really worked out how and what ways we would have the education component for ordinary citizens that want to come. But I feel like it's mostly going to fall on the businesses that are selling, to make sure.
Would that training be offered more than once? Because the people who come are going to be different from event to event.
Yeah. Well, so, event to event, it would just be the four that are in downtown. And like I said, ALE is in Raleigh, so they have no problem coming and doing multiple trainings. I feel like their mission and prerogative is to make sure everybody is educated. So, that way, there's not any, any laws that are being broken, especially in the beginning.
And if I may, that businesses that are not licensed to sell alcohol or provide alcohol at this time, that want to allow open consumption in their businesses, they become subject to the alcohol, the ALE regulation. So, I think that some of the training is, what does that mean? You know, it's basically so that, I think part of it is that, so that minors don't get access to alcohol and then go into a store and evade detection that way. There was, there was some concern that, that there needed to be jurisdiction. So, businesses that opt in to allowing patrons in need to know, you know, what that would entail for them.
I also plan to do, if it is adopted and approved, businesses have to apply and opt in. And then, having, you know, an instruction manual that, like Terry was saying, you know, once you, really educating them that once they are in the district and an open participant, they are subject to ALE, and they can, people can come in, their police can come into their business, and ALE officers can also come into their business.
Okay, Mr. Matthews.
Most of the questions I have pretty much have been asked. I just think as a comment that, I know, I think City of Durham is voting tonight or tomorrow to do this. And with a defined area, which we truly have defined on the presentation, I don't see the big issue with any, anything with it. I think it'd be fine, it'll help the local businesses down there. And if there's issues, I'm sure the police department will let us know.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dellinger.
Thank you for the presentation. I don't, as fair and balanced with pros and cons as anything I've seen. Do you want us to do this or not? I'm not sure. I've watched you on DGA, you know, work with Terry throughout this, on this throughout the year, and reach out to other communities and Main Street programs and get their feedback on crime, and there hasn't been that. But I think that this education and training piece is something we need to figure out on whose responsibility is it? Is it the towns? Is it DGAs? How often are we going to do it? Because even if you're, you even need to be educated if you don't want the alcohol, so that you know that you cannot have it. So, I think we need to kind of, it might be helpful to look and reach out to some of these other communities and see how they've engaged in this training and this outreach. And also, to sort of Mr. Singleton's question, this, this switching between permits and events, how are we going to clarify that for people who go down so that they understand? Because you get that familiarity of, "Oh, the social district's here", and then another event comes, and all of a sudden, they're like, "Oh, wait, what do you mean? I can't do X, Y, or Z." So, I think probably next thing, reach out to some other communities and towns our size, not your Raleigh's and Durham's, but, and see how they've kind of done that outreach. Because I know you've, you know, we have a, Jake is on the board of DGA now. And, you know, I know you've like made a concerted effort to reach out to all the business owners and get their information. So, we'll just need to find the right conduit for, for training and that piece. So, that's all.
Since, I'll get to you in a minute, Mr. Vance. Since my question is, I think, is related to Mr. Dellinger's. But I understand, I guess this is new enough that we don't really have statistical data in regards to the increased incidences of excessive drinking and those kinds of things. And in particular, I would be concerned if, if there's any correlation between this type thing and the increase of people who operate a motor vehicle under the influence of alcohol. It's a terrible, terrible thing to do, but at any rate. And I'm also interested in, you know, what impact it has on, on the police department. I assume maybe they will have someone in the area that's sort of, to use the term, polices the area. But at any rate, I think, I guess the key is the term that's often used. And if people drink responsibly, then there should not be any problems. But over the course of my life, I've known a few people that did not drink responsibly, and that, that causes serious problems in a lot of ways. But at any rate, so maybe at some point, we can get some data from other, from other towns that, I guess, look at this and perhaps can even offer suggestions of things we might do if there are particular problems.
So, I have reached out to the different communities that have adopted it. They haven't sent me solid data, but like I reached out to the bigger cities and then smaller cities as well. So, like Silva in the Mountains has one. She, she's responded back to me that they haven't seen anything. If anything, their crime level is the same or better. And then, when I reached out to Greensboro's downtown manager, she said she's working closely with Greensboro PD and that they haven't had any issues and that the police department actually is surprised by how little issues that they have had. So, I'm also working, the North Carolina Main Street office is also working on gathering more solid police data. And I reached out to Raleigh's police department, still haven't heard back. But if I have, when I get that, I'll make sure to share it.
Okay, thank you very much. I would note that Silva is seven miles from Western Carolina University. I would wonder, of course, a lot of college students aren't of drinking age. 21 has to be the age, right?
Yes.
So, okay. Now, I'll go to Mr. Vance down there.
Well, the questions have been asked and answered, so I have none.
Okay, okay. Anything else on the second round by anybody?
Well, I think one question about the special events is under D, under a social district, item six. It does talk about the special event permitting may allow alcoholic beverages to be carried to the special event area, or it may refuse to allow any. So, I would hope, I don't know if this, all these need to come back to the council. I just think it should be built to the policy. I would make the assumption that good judgment will be used. And if you had a family from the event, I would hope that it wouldn't be sold. But anyway, this is gray. Tree lighting and the Santa Claus, I don't think, should be mixed in, but I would hope that people would use good judgment.
I mean, can we clarify that right now? We're getting, well, we wouldn't have time to implement this anyway, but I certainly agree with Ms. Singleton that there are certainly family-friendly events that it would seem appropriate to, to modify.
We also have in there that it cannot be consumed on any government property. And so, that also includes the green space in front of the rec center. So, it would almost, even if there are special events, if they do decide to go outside, then we would, family-friendly events, let them know that, you know, that the social district is active, and they have to determine whether they want to participate in it. But for most of them, I don't see that are family-friendly and located mainly at the rec center property. I don't see it being the issue, because it's already, every day, it's not going to be in the district. We, we stopped the line at Full Bloom for that reason.
Just one other thing, and then I'll, I'll quit. I'm supposing that the police department had a chance to at least make comments or at least indicate whether or not they feel like it would have any significant impact on them and their force. I'd be curious to know. Welcome, Chief Smith.
Hey, good evening. We had the opportunity to meet a few weeks back and discuss some of the challenges and issues with it. The area that they're planning or requesting to implement a social district is very small. It's very contained. I've reached out some, to some of my counterparts in other municipalities who've recently implemented it. Based on the conversation that we've had in my experience with that area, we're not anticipating a large amount of issues. As with anything, when something's new, we're going to focus our efforts on education in conjunction with the town, and then we can monitor activities as, as needed.
Okay, good. Thank you.
We're not anticipating any kind of issues.
Okay, thanks. Okay, that's all the questions I have. Anybody else? I'm supposing, Mr. Manager, well, go ahead.
I have just one question for clarification for myself. I know when Mr. Singleton was talking about special events and asked the town attorney a question about, that I believe she said we could suspend alcohol sales during special events? Is that, or is that the carrying of...
You could suspend the social district, meaning there wouldn't be open containers outside of establishments.
But the ABC allow, businesses would still be able to sell alcohol inside their business? Okay.
But people just wouldn't be walking around with alcohol in a cup, is that right? They'd have to stay within the business.
Yes. Okay, I just want to make sure I was clear on that.
Okay, yeah. I appreciate that clarity. So, council, or I guess, Mr. Manager, we could, we need to bring this back to the council in a business session. Could be done on consent, or we could put it on the regular agenda. Is that the next move?
My answer is to bring it back on consent at the next regularly scheduled meeting at your direction. And, you know, if you don't want it on consent, if you want it in a different area of the agenda, that's fine also.
So, let's see, that would be our next meeting in December?
Monday.
It's Monday.
That's right.
Yeah, the fifth, yeah.
Yes, on the, on the proposed upcoming schedule, it's on there. It's listed as a, on the consenting agenda. And I had no trouble, because you had a special meeting last week. If I recall, last Monday, y'all had a special 90-minute meeting in here. It was broadcast live, I believe, was it not? Yeah.
Okay. Consent would be good. Council good with consent agenda, all right. Coming back next week, okay? All right, well, thank you for taking the time to answer the questions and to share the information. And I'm certainly interested in our downtown. We made a lot of progress there, and I hope this will be a further indication of that being a prosperous place and a place that people are attracted to, and they will be attracted for all the right reasons and become even more of a bustling place. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is, we'll hear from John, is that right, John? Supplemental resurfacing contract for commercial, excuse me, Leah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I saw John's name there at the end.
All right, he will jump in as needed, I believe.
Maybe you and John, okay, yeah.
Possibly, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, thank you for your time this evening. I don't have a real formal presentation, but a few visuals, if we need them. So, just for a little background, as you all know, we have a pavement management program that includes an annual contract for resurfacing, as well as an annual contract for pavement preservation. That affords us approximately $750,000 per year for resurfacing of town streets. And the way those streets are selected every year is that we have a pavement assessment that is done by a consultant. And every street segment is assigned a pavement condition index. And every year, we look at those indexes focusing on the streets in the poorest condition first and kind of grouping them by neighborhood for efficiency and select the streets that we are going to do with that year's contract. So, as we stand today, of course, as you know, most of our larger streets within the town limits are NCDOT streets, so we are not responsible for resurfacing those. But we do have a handful of larger commercial or industrial streets that are within our maintenance responsibility, and several that are becoming pretty high on the priority list for resurfacing. There are some of the lower-conditioned streets that we have. Because of the usually larger width of a commercial or industrial street compared to a local neighborhood street, and then also they generally have more robust pavement sections, it's thicker pavement, the cost to resurface these streets is, is higher than the cost to resurface at a local neighborhood street. So this is something that had come up when Chris Johnson was still here, I think he brought it up, and we're revisiting now, is we were entertaining the possibility of doing a supplemental contract for resurfacing, potentially using the 2021 transportation bond funding or another one-time source of funding to knock out some of these larger commercial and industrial streets, so that they don't have to take the place of resurfacing the local streets that we're used to doing every year. So the, the streets that we have identified for, for now, there are six streets kind of grouped into those four areas. You have Waterfield Ridge Place and Waterfield Drive, which are in the Greenfield neighborhood, Garner Station Boulevard and Anaron Court in the north-south station area, Bobbit Drive, which is near 70 and Vandora Springs, and then Valrose Court near Mechanical Boulevard. And I guess I could put this in presentation mode, that would probably be better. So just for your reference, north is up on all of these maps. This is the first two streets in the Greenfield area. You have Waterfield Ridge Place. You can see, these are snips from our pavement management map that we have on our website. So the color is indicative of the pavement condition, with red being the lowest condition. So there's a section of Waterfield Ridge, you can see here, that is a town street. And then we have Waterfield Drive, which portions of it are in worse condition than others. We have them rated by segment, so that we're not generalizing piece, all the pieces together. But the, for purposes of this presentation, we've included basically this whole stretch of Waterfield from here to the end, as it's likely more efficient to do it all at once if we're going to take on doing it. In the north-south station area, you have Garner Station Boulevard, particularly from Fayetteville Road to Junction Boulevard, so this is first stretch here. And then also Anaron Court, which is a cul-de-sac, starting at Fayetteville Road and ending on the east end here. And then we have Bobbit Drive, which is off Endora Springs. This is a kind of industrial type of road, a lot of big trucks, so a lot of wear and tear on the street. It's a, it's a very long cul-de-sac street back here north of 70. And then the final one is a very short Valrose Court, which is off Mechanical, near the Best Western there, so again, a cul-de-sac, but a, a short one, that's a commercial-style street. This is similar to the first slide, but this kind of breaks it down by estimated cost by street. So total, the estimated cost to resurface these six commercial industrial streets is around one and a half million, which at current funding levels would consume approximately two years of our resurfacing budget. The potential problem with that being that that's two years' worth of local and neighborhood streets that we have to forego to be able to accomplish that. This doesn't have to be all or nothing. We can, you know, do a portion of the streets or whatever we decide is most appropriate. But really, today, just looking for guidance from y'all on whether we want to pursue using one-time funding to knock out some of these more expensive streets for resurfacing, rather than including them on our annual resurfacing list, like we do with everything else. And I would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
So the question is whether or not the council wants to, I guess, use what, transportation bond funds to cover most of this or all of this?
Yes, I think we, transportation bond funds is what we had proposed. Of course, that is up to y'all, what source of funding you would want to use. And this would obviously have to go to, to bid, and that would come back to you for award of the actual contract. But we would just be looking for guidance as to whether we want to pursue that or not at this time.
All right, council, weigh in on this topic here. I'll start with Mr. Vance down on this end.
So you're asking for a supplement of 1.5 million?
Correct. If we were to resurface all of these streets outside of the annual resurfacing contract, we'd be looking at approximately 1.5 million. And we could potentially do that either as a separate contract, or we could include the additional funding and do a more robust resurfacing contract for the 2023 year.
Okay, do we know how much do we currently have for the transportation bonds funding? How much is there now?
John, do you potentially?
Twenty-four, okay, gotcha, okay.
I'm sorry, and then we got some projects, like Jones, all these roads.
Okay, that's all I have. Okay, thanks, sir, Mr. Dellinger.
Yes, a couple of questions. So are these the only commercial and industrial roads that are in this red condition? And if they aren't, how are these prioritized? And then the second part of that question is, how many more miles of commercial industrial road are in red?
These are the only ones that would be in red. And there are a couple of sections, particularly of Waterfield, where not that entire stretch was actually red, but it's close enough that it probably makes the most sense to lump it together. But we've been, you know, resurfacing streets from the bottom up, basically, so now we've gotten to the point where anything that's in worse condition than these, for the most part, has been resurfaced. And we've not done these, you know, that, I guess, they're, they're behind the rest of the, the curve now at this point. But they are the only commercial industrial streets that are currently at that level of condition.
And I guess my other question is related to Mr. Vance's question, and I think we talked about this earlier on tracking bond funds, so that we can kind of see what's sort of in the queue for using these funds, just to have an idea of where those funds are going. So I think that would be, it'd be helpful to put into context with other projects that are going to be dependent on those funds.
Right, it definitely would be, and I know that's something we've been working on with sort of standardizing some of the, the project management with these new projects. And we have several projects that are in more of the early phases of design right now. So once we get those construction estimates coming in, we'll definitely have a better idea of what we're looking at as far as expenditures.
Thank you, Ms. Berry.
I guess it's a question, John, if you would repeat, or did you say it? How much money we have in the transportation bonds category now?
Twenty-four, but again, with, there's some projects like Joan Sausage, where I think there's been a commitment made.
Twenty-four million?
Yes.
Okay, and, and the Joan Sausage Road project, we take up how much?
The last number we had on that, I think, is.
It was around 13 million for the first phase, which we have submitted a lap application for that as well. So hopefully, we will have some assistance in, in funding that monster.
Okay, Mr. Singleton?
So this particular total, 750,000, that's pow bill funding, right? That's the pow bill.
And the, the tax, the tag revenue that was dedicated to resurfacing.
We did this, we were exceeding well over a million dollars in those, in the, in the tags and the, and the.
You got 750 for resurfacing, then we use some others for patching and repair. So it's over a million dollars when you add the two together.
Right, but some of that money comes from the, the tags, because then we're growing and we're getting more vehicles, so that number should be increasing. I know pow bill is flat and maybe falling because of the gas tax, that's a whole nother story. Okay, I just want to make sure, I was looking at the number, because I'm sitting here thinking, we spend more than 750,000 dollars resurfacing and patching and doing the, the pavement enhancement program?
Correct.
All right, so I want to make sure, okay, all right, thank. And it's amazing to look at the Waterfield, which is a big, wide, long street, some over a mile, I believe. It's, as much as the annual resurfacing, just to do that one road. But it's a, a road that uses heavier vehicles.
It does, heavier vehicles, and then that, like you said, that wider width adds up quickly when you start looking at the amount of pavement.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Matthews.
All my questions been answered, sir, thank you.
All right, so, let me see, are you asking for a yes? Provide guidance to you, so.
Yes, I think nothing, nothing formal at this time. We would have to bring back a bid, but if you would like for us to pursue seeking bids from contractors for that work, for a supplemental contract, then guidance in doing so.
Needs to be done, has to be done, right?
Eventually, yes, it will have to be done.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add one thing, one consideration that we may want to, to, to bring back to you is Garner Station Boulevard, it is in red condition, that short segment, but that is also a segment that there'll be some disruption of that area when the BRT project moves forward. And at the time, we originally put this list together, we didn't, had not moved to a, a point with that, or Raleigh had not, that we had the next step of assurance that that project was going to move forward. And while there's still some questions, it's looking like that's going to move forward. So one thought would be whether or not we wouldn't add that this year, just until we knew more of a timetable, so we weren't putting in fresh pavement that might get disturbed. It, it may still take some years to get to that point, but it still may not be the, the best timing, depending on when we think the BRT may move forward. However, on, on Greenfield, one good timing element for this, for Waterfield, the corner, one of the large developments that's going in now, short of the pool property redeveloping, which we don't think is in the foreseeable future, that finishes building out most of that park on the south side. So the timing's pretty good in that we could come in right behind some of the major construction and not really be worried about construction doing damage to the asphalt we put down. So just a, sort of a reassurance on Waterfield, and also sort of a caution on Garner Station that we might want to think through the timing on Garner Station.
Sure, it sounds reasonable to me, if we know that other work is, is gonna, is gonna possibly be done, wait and see, you know.
Based off conditions of bid and so forth and weather, this, we're talking about this project not taking place till either spring or next summer, right?
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, we usually bid our resurfacing contracts just after the first of the year to take place in spring and summer, so I would expect a similar timeframe.
Okay, so council, I guess, I think, I sense that you're desiring to, to move ahead with, with, with the bids on the basis of the proposal here, right?
Correct.
Okay, shake your head, yes, okay, all right. All right, thank you very much, Ms. Harrison, we appreciate your, your work on this and the report you gave.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
All right, according to my agenda, we are now down to manager reports. So, Mr. Manager, we'll hear from you, sure.
Okay, you have the pending agenda in the back of your packet, just showing the upcoming meetings for December and January. And just a reminder that we do not plan to have a meeting, the first, well, let me back up. We will not have a work session in December, which we traditionally do not have. And then we also, council decided to forego the first meeting in January, right after the New Year and the other holidays, so.
Our first meeting in January would be when we customarily have our second meeting, is that right? Or do we just move it to a different date?
No, we, we just eliminated the first meeting in January.
Okay.
So we will keep the regular date for the second meeting, which would be January 17.
That's what I meant to say, yeah, okay, thank you.
Any?
I have one, yeah, just one question. What, what sort of the scope of the public hearings? We have five of them, which seems like a lot, but the Triumph Point, that's a special, that's come back. How, how extensive are those? There are five public hearings and then another old and new business development, that's all.
One of the public hearings is annexation petition, so that one's.
Four, okay, yeah.
Pretty simple, straightforward, I should say. Triumph Point is the, it's got a new name now, Triumph Station, I believe. That's the affordable housing.
Yeah, that's the quasi, that's a quasi judicial, which seems like a lot.
And then the other's conditional zoning. Golden Trace, I don't remember what that, what that is, Golden Trace.
Residential development.
Where?
Residential development.
Now, where is it located?
It is in the New Bethel area.
Oh, okay, these things, they change names so much, okay.
All right, any other questions on that issue?
You know how extensive these are, John? Each one of these? Or Leah? Yeah, yeah, if you could chime in.
I'd remind me what the L are, but.
Golden Trace, which is off the New Bethel.
It is, it's in the, the high school area. It's a residential development, not real large, but it backs up to the Harper's Landing development, kind of on the opposite side of that. I don't remember exactly how many units, but I would say in the, in the 100 units range, single family.
And Copper Ridge?
Copper Ridge is residential development as well, off 1010 west of Old Stage. Probably similar scale.
Is that next to White Mountain?
South of E, Eagle Ridge.
Yes, yeah, it would potentially be connecting to some streets through there.
Stone Mountain, not White Mountain, Stone Mountain.
Yeah, there are a few very, kind of long, narrow, north-south looking properties in that area. They have a few of those combined for a medium-sized residential development.
And then Ackerman Road, is all it says, I don't know what that.
Is that a rezoning?
Yes.
Okay, we have a town home development proposed for Ackerman Road. It's kind of sandwiched between the Ridge Moore subdivision that's at Ackerman and Hebron Church area, and then there's the existing development off Ackerman that I can't remember the name of right off the bat. It's an older development, but there's a, a couple of parcels right between there that has a small proposed town home development. Bingham Station, yes, thank you.
That's different than the one that was north of Ridge Moore. No, I'm not thinking of Ridge Moore, I'm thinking about the wrong part, never mind.
There's a lot, it's hard to keep track. Yeah, yeah, it's a, it's a smaller, it would connect to streets, kind of through, connect Ridge Moore to Bingham Station, basically, through a series of streets and a small number of townhomes.
Then the Everstate, so I, I guess the point is it potential to be a pretty long meeting, I guess.
Okay, anything else, any other questions for the manager on his report?
Let me ask this then, for the long meeting, can we, the Public Works reaccreditation presentation, can that be moved to January?
Yeah, that can be moved.
I mean, anytime you can drop a present, I'm just saying, unless we've got to do it by the, by the reaccreditation process.
Sure, we can certainly ask. I know that the National Organization, the president lives in North Carolina, and so we were hoping that he would be able to attend and make the presentation, but I will talk with the Public Works Director and see about the flexibility of rescheduling that.
Okay, anything else?
Yes, let me, let me put on my hat that I was so graciously given. At least, at least, I guess that's Duke Blue, depends on which way you rub the.
We need Mr. Mercer here with his camera.
Festive mood, no pictures, please, no pictures. Got a reputation to uphold.
Don't ever stand side by side if you buck your ass.
I'm here in.
Get down there and have one on one side, one on the other.
I'm here in holiday solidarity.
All right, so while we're, got our hats on, just want to go over the holiday events. Just the, Saturday, we got a whole list of festivities planned downtown. Starting off at 2:00, we will have the block party on the lawn of the rec center, and that will include games and fun activities for families and kids. We are bringing back the train, which was a, a really big hit, the, the train ride around the field. Not sure if we're going to have the, the snow machine or whatever, but we'll see what else we get. It's supposed to be unseasonably warm, so it will be warm probably during the block party and get cooler as we go through the, toward the evening, so, so just be prepared for that. And then 4:30, we will have parade that will be going from New Rand Road to 50, so traveling down Main Street. We'll have Santa Claus, and any other thing you want to mention about the parade?
We are going to start posting more about the street closures, I think the town should as well. We went, part of, some of the. should as well. We went, part of, some of the committee members went door to door and hit all the residential streets and houses and let them know about the road closures. But people should look out for notices on when certain roads will be closed and opened. Purvis will be closed the entire time. And then the road, most of the streets, all the streets along Main Street will be blocked off about 30 minutes before the parade starts. And Carroll and New Rand will be closed around 2 for staging for the parade. Only local resident, resident traffic will be allowed down those streets. So, but we'll post, we'll post stuff, and I'm sure the town will post, just to make sure people don't get stuck somewhere and not be able to get around.
So it'd be a citizen, a citizen sponsored parade, but the town will have some involvement. It's mainly where it involves safety and those type of things. So right after the parade ends, we will have a tree lighting, and that will be in the empty lot right there next to the, the Garner Rec Center, up near Main Street, so.
The same place, essentially.
Same place it was last year.
Okay.
Yep. So just three events right there, back to back. So it should be a fun-filled day for everybody. So just encouraging everybody to come out. Weather's going to be nice. I don't think they're calling for any rain. So, so should be a good event. The next thing I wanted to go over, and John, did you bring copies?
Let me, let me ask, this is maybe, seems trivial, but if not, I guess, for those in the parade, or I know safety is a concern, always is, but giving candy, throwing candy to people on the sidewalks is, is, what's the parade status on that, as one who's in the parade?
Prefer to...
That's a tradition that's been there, but go ahead.
Yep. So even last year, we disallowed the throwing of candy from vehicles and floats. It can only be handed by walkers. So, and also it being, so we already had that in place, but also it being sort of a night parade, dusk parade, it's all even more important that we keep as many people, especially kids, outside, out of the street during the parade.
Okay. So only if you can hand candy to people is it permitted?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's clarification. I'm sorry, go ahead.
All right. So Mr. Hodges is passing out a series of graphs and spreadsheets. Mr. Dellinger had asked for some, some statistics on our development, namely COs, certificates of occupancy for, mainly for single-family homes, townhomes, and some multifamily. And so this is kind of our first take at putting some information together in a graphic form. One side, you'll see the, the charts, histogram, and bar, and line graphs showing you the number of units issued. And it's comparing year after year. So where we had data, we compared two years, and where we had more data, we compared three years. So you may see some that have three-year comparison and some have two-year comparison. But, but I mean, bottom line is, you can see that the town is growing, you know, pretty good rate, pretty steady rate over the last few years. And then if you look on the back, you can see kind of the growth from a month-by-month perspective, and that gives you the numbers. And this is divided by fiscal year. So if we want to, like, correlate it to the budget or anything like that, so it shows the number of units. So, and then we'll refine this as we go, and we'll figure out the best way to distribute this to you on a regular basis. And anything you want to say? I know we want to thank Mari for all the hard work she did.
Thank Mari, but also thank planning staff and others who helped pull the data together. As I've mentioned before, we're challenged with some of our sort of older systems that we have to, that we're using. And we're moving away from those, is the good news. But we taken, taken a little more time than expected to be able to pull some of the data sources together. Mari Howe did do a great job in pulling this together. We'd love input on anything additional or different you'd like to see in it. She also did lay it out so that it's somewhat matching of your Talk of the Town newsletter that Ms. Miller rolled out. So we can, if you choose for us to, we could just add this as another page to the Talk of the Town on maybe a quarterly basis or something that would have meaning. I'm not sure monthly may, may or may not have enough meaning for you. So thank you to her. Thank you to planning staff and others that helped with it. The exercise that Mari's working on now and others is to try to correlate this with some ways that we can cross-reference it to the tax data. As the manager mentioned, this will be, and Mr. Dellinger's mentioned, this will be very important moving forward with budget preparation and budget projections. So we're now working through some, some exercises to figure out, how can we correlate this to the way the Tax Office books a dwelling and what year it was built in? And then there's a gap sometimes between the year built and when the tax bill starts. So we still, we're still trying to work out some of those nuances. So we didn't want to bring you anything that wasn't complete today. But that is the step we're working on now. We'd love any input that you have on, if you see anything that's, that's especially missing on this, then we can try to go ahead and work it into the initial layout so that we can start including this for you.
Okay, thank you. Need to spend a little time looking over it and analyzing here, I guess.
Feel free to email us information, whether you share it tonight, or email us feedback or anything else. And we'll, we'll continue to make tweaks to this and make it so it can be a useful product for you.
One quick question on the multifamily, because I'm sure it's much more difficult to compare multifamily. And I saw it on the back. What are some of the, if you know, you might not, off the top of your head, what are some of the challenges in measuring that accurately? Because in case we could assume everything is a hun, best assumption is everything is about 100% occupancy in terms of residents. But I mean, it just...
But you don't know. Yeah, we don't know. The challenge, the thing that's a little difference, not a challenge, but the thing that's different is CEOs are issued on apartments per building. So some built, some apartment buildings have, you know, X number of residents, and some have a different number. So for that, when we have to go through a manual calculation of comparing that data to the inspections Department. And so these numbers, we originally had just the number of CEOs issued, but we've worked with inspections to make that the actual number of units that are approved. And so I don't have an answer about the percentage completion or percentage full, but we are presenting this in how many actual rentable units are open and available at this time, rather than an approximation of how many units might be in a building. Does that answer your question, Mr. Dellinger?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Manager, what else do you have?
That's all I have.
Okay. We will go to council reports, and I'll start to my right with Mr. Vance.
I would just like to say that it was good to see, go be a part of the groundbreaking on this morning for Fire Station 5. And hearing the history coming from Chief Poole, this was a collaboration, a collaborative effort, one which was, he stated, 10 years in the making. So it was good to see everyone out there, Wake County, and with the, with the police EMS, and also with the fire station, with Chief Poole out there, all telling about the need for the facility and with, with the growth coming in and the growing pains is imperative that we are able to have the services to be able to be, to, to respond to the calls when they are needed. So it was good to be a part of that endeavor. And next, I would like to say that, for those who don't know, that the New, the New Bethel Church Road Bridge over Marlowe Creek is now open. Yes, I was pleasantly surprised when I went down, and I said, oh, wow. So it's a straight shot, a great improvement. And it's, it's good to know that that road project that is taking some time to get going, one of the major delays on that one was utilities. We're trying to get those utilities relocated. And that's the question I asked about the utilities relative to the, around about as well. I know they can be a challenge, but it's good to know that, 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 that project is well on the way. And it just goes to show that it takes time for projects of both magnitude, for the fire station and also for road projects. But once they're in place, you, you definitely feel the difference. But it takes time for those. And I just want to say, it's just good to see those, those two major projects that have been completed for the town. And I know there are other major road projects, and other, other, other capital projects are in, in the works. But those things take time in order to get them in place. That's all I have.
Okay, thanks, sir, Mr. Dellinger. Counsel report?
Nothing. Just encourage everybody to come out this weekend to the block party and the parade and the tree lighting. Have fun.
Okay. Mr. Behringer?
I'd like to echo Mr. Councilmember Vance's remarks about the new fire session. I became the town's council liaison to the fire department about 15 years ago, and they had just finished Station 4. And so to see the new Station 5 was, was amazing. And to watch what Chief Poole has done over the years as far as managing the fire department, leading it in the right direction, and pulling resources together has been amazing. So that was a good thing today. And I am very much looking forward to the block party and the parade on Saturday.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Singlin.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have heard the block party advertised on the radio. There's some radio ads out there, so it's good to hear. There'll be another one that's coming Thursday night all over east in North Carolina, free of charge. Mr. Matthews and I have someone we listen to who's going to do a, do a freebie for us, which is good. It's, it's good to hear that the bridge is open, Mr. Vance. Initially, the plan was to have it open before the South Corner High School opened. South Corner High School opened in the fall of 2016. So we're six years later, so there was some funding issues, then the utility issues. Then we're going to run a greenway through it issues, and we're going to do this issue. And so, hey, six years after it was talked about being open, and it's there. So it will make the road safer. And again, I mentioned last week, the sidewalk is nice. You go all the way from the park, all the way, almost to Clifford Road, you're just one lot from getting there. So that's, that's a nice improvement. So, thank you.
Mr. Matthews?
Just a great day. I'd echo Mr. Vance, I'm at the groundbreaking of Station 5 out there, much needed. And it's going to be, hopefully, it's going to save a lot of lives and, and people's homes and businesses if, if the need ever arises. And looking forward to the weekend. It's going to be a fun time, Saturday.
Okay.
Question on Station 5, just to confirm. That's supposed to be opening in February of '24?
Or, or late '23, but it may push into '24.
It's one of the articles that they said it was going to open in February of '23. I was like, I believe you got, you think a year off there?
No.
Unless they can drop a, a modular one in there, I don't think that's going to happen. Okay. Just want to make sure. I thought it was, take a little over a year to get built.
It will.
They are making good progress on the EMS station on Thompson Road, if you haven't driven by there.
They're right on that.
They're doing business.
Yes.
Okay. So thank you, counsel. I would just observe, I'm trying to think of the whole saying I've heard, it's, it's really nice when a plan comes together. And I think that's certainly a description of the partnership between this town and Wake County for the, for the facility that will benefit both entities. And, you know, that's what government sort of do, in my opinion. And that's, that's what we engaged in out there. So appreciate the county's partnership and look forward to, I believe we said, ribbon cutting out there. Not so soon, whenever they get it ready. With that said, yeah, I invite you all to, to come out to the festivities on Saturday. A lot of things going on for small children to older adults, I guess. So I hope to see you out there, for sure. That's all I have on my agenda. So I think adjournment is in order unless anybody else has something for the good of the cause. Okay?
There's no closed session?
I believe that, yeah, that, that was not, is not a go tonight. Okay. So, anything else? No. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
The move, the move.
Okay, moved by several people. If you favor the motion, would you vote aye?
Aye.
And it is approved. Thank you, counsel, for moving through this expeditiously. We'll see you next week. No, no, no.
On Saturday.
Yeah, Saturday.
It goes on Saturday.
Yeah. I was thinking about the next meeting.
Another later you'll see.
And next, and next Monday, the man needs to be wearing a hat. Needs to be wearing the Santa hat. What do you think?